All right. Welcome, everyone, to the March 24th meeting of the Kingston Select Board. If you'll rise with me to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. All right. We have board members with us. We'll introduce them, starting to my right. Board member Ellen Faulkner. Board member Peter Baiki. To my immediate right, a board member and vice-chair Ellie Alessio. I'm your current chair Glenn Koppelmann. To my left is our administrative assistant Susan Eyre and board member Laurie Swin. We also have Tom Rowan with us in the audience, our Director of Building and Grounds, and Ernie Landry, Chair of the Heritage Commission, and Stacy Dion, Chair of the Budget Committee. So, welcome to all of you as well. Okay. We do have a couple of appointments, and the first one is, and hopefully I can pronounce this right the first time, Nick Ramos.
Remus.
Ah, ja!
So close.
Is it spelled R-A-M-O-S?
R-I-M-A-S.
Ah! Well, then it's not my fault.
That's what I was saying.
R-I.
So sorry.
M-A-S. Pronounced Remus. Ah, okay. Sorry about that. That's not a very good way to start, but, all right. Would you please come up and join us at the table over here? Absolutely, yep. So, before you start, make sure that your microphone, if you push the button, it will turn green, and just leave it sitting in front of you there, and go ahead and introduce yourself for us.
My name is Nick Remus. I'm with Police Air Troop 91 in Kingston, or technically Newton, but it's Troop 91-93. I've been scouting since first grade, and I'm going through my Eagle, and I decided to do my Eagle Scout project at the Kingston Recreation Center. I wanted to come here tonight to get approval from the Select Board to do my project.
Excellent. How far along are you in the Eagle process?
Well, right now in life, I just need my project. I just need to submit my paperwork to the council and get approval from the Town of Kingston for my project.
Nice. So you've handed us some material here. I'm assuming this describes the project that you're looking to undertake?
Yep. This describes what I'm going to be doing and my plan to do it. I will be doing water bars at the Kingston Rec Center. So, from the Grand Parkin lot, there's always a sudden water runoff whenever it rains heavily, and it goes into Great Pond, which also erodes all the material, like all the grass and all the roots for the trees going down there. So water bars will sink all the excess water into the soil and stop it from eroding. It'll also, there is a certain step we're supposed to use to go down to the beach, and people don't use them because they see a big open white spot and decide to go down there, which is more dangerous because it's full of rocks and loose material and everything like that.
And it looks like you have a materials list here. Is this material that's going to be provided by you, or by DPW, or how?
Some of it should be provided by, I think, the washed stone should be provided by the DPW. The rest of it, I'm either going to have it funded or donated. I'm hoping for, I work at Home Depot in Plaistow, I'm hoping they'll donate those materials.
Okay. Tom, is that, I don't know if you want to come up and also add into the conversation, but...
No.
No, but, you are.
I thought it would be a good idea we donate the stone to his project. It's only helping us. It's actually going to help with the MS4, and it needs to be done.
Right.
Regardless of it.
Do you have the material available, the stone?
We don't currently have enough, but it won't be an excessive amount. We will have it because I have to purchase some for another project, so we'll be getting it.
Okay.
Roughly about $30 a yard, somewhere in there.
Nick, what do you anticipate for the timing of this to be? When would you start and when would you finish?
I'm hoping to start it around early summer. I just have to work around the Kingston Recreation Summer Camp, so I'll probably be doing it on weekends. I don't really have a set date yet because I still have to get my stuff approved by the district for scouting, and also set up dates for people to meet with me and help me out with my project. But probably early summer.
Okay. Question from the board?
I think it's a great idea.
Do you do all the work yourself, or do you help people help you with that?
I would probably need help from fellow scouts and whoever in the community I can get that can help, probably my Scout Masters. I shouldn't need much equipment, probably just shovels. I mean, it's not too much digging.
Right.
It's just digging tiny boxes and then putting bars in front of it, and then filling it with stuff that'll soak everything into the soil, and then at the bottom, putting plants that'll soak up the rest of the water that the water bars don't catch.
Tom mentioned that this is going to be an important piece of our MS4, and for those who don't know, MS4 is the EPA permit that the Town of Kingston is responsible for its stormwater management, and water running off and flowing into our lakes and ponds is one of the areas that we need to be careful of, and in fact, the, there's going to be some work over Greenwood Pond as well. Similar situation runoff, you know, to slow that water running off so that it has a chance to infiltrate before it hits the water. Yeah?
One quick question. What made you think of this as a project?
Well, I was asking around, because I live in Newton, so I asked the Town of Newton first, and then I asked around in Kingston, and I know a lot of fellow scouts have also done the Eagle Scout project at the Town of Kingston, so I know there's a lot of help around doing their projects, and they brought up doing the terracing, and it just felt right for me. Because I work in garden at Home Depot, so I know most of the stuff anyways, so it just felt like it was in the right field for me.
Thank you. It's a great idea.
Yeah, yeah. Anything else from the board? Tom, anything else you'd like to add?
No, I think it's a good project for the town, and a good project for Nick.
So I think it's important, though, I'm assuming we'll proceed with this, and we'll do it by vote of the board, but I want to make sure that Nick works closely with you and the department to make sure you guys are coordinated in that.
Yeah, I think, you understood that, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
For timing and for coordination and...
Timing, yeah, yeah. There's a few factors, and summer camp is the biggest. And I think it will, I don't, if he, depends on the help brought, I think it's a weekend and maybe an extra day. That's what I'm guessing. So, as long as it's safe, if he doesn't finish during the week, the weekend, as long as everything's, it has to be safe for the...
Right.
And it'll be fine.
Okay.
He'll manage.
All right. So, if the board is ready?
I move that we approve Nick Remus's...
Thank you.
I move that we approve the project presented by young master Nick Remus for his Eagle Scout project.
Second.
All right, motion by Ellie.
Everybody's second.
Second by Laurie. Further discussion?
What does the gentleman need from us now that he needs to bring back? I'm sorry. What does the gentleman need from us now to bring back to his organization? Just a letter from us, or what do you need?
I shouldn't need anything. I just needed, I just wanted the approval from the town, just to make sure that you guys knew. I know, I was reading through the MS4, and there's definitely a lot of things that I didn't know if they were going to be approved or not with the project.
I think that it would be appropriate for us to generate a letter.
Absolutely.
And we would normally do that anyway, so after we take the vote, Susan would then issue you a letter explaining the vote that was taken, and that will be something that you can use for support with your own organization.
I appreciate it.
And I'm going to, I'm going to have one more request before we take the vote, and that is that when the project is all done, you come back and tell us about it, and tell us how it went, maybe have some pictures of it. Great.
I will.
All right. Anything further? All right, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous.
Good luck.
Thank you very much, Nick. Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
And thank you for thinking of us for doing it.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Oh, no. Can I keep it? Okay.
Do you need, do you need some copies? Okay.
Yeah, I can get it from, well, if you have it, if you... It's not on here, right?
You want some of these back?
Okay.
You want some back and hand out to other people?
No, I'm also, I just didn't know if you guys...
Yeah, now I have your name, right?
You all might, yeah.
Now would be great.
11492.
49. 1149. Got it.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Appreciate the name.
You too.
Okay, next up, Ernie.
Well, we're finalizing our plans of the 300th anniversary celebration for the Plain Cemetery, and part of what we want to do is to have a celebration, of course, of the cemetery itself, but also have tours of the cemetery. Glenn Knoblock, who's a historian, did a tour here probably four years ago, so the cemetery, we had about 75 people, and it was a very popular thing, so we thought it would be good to do that again as a part of a celebration of the cemetery's 300th anniversary. We don't know how many people will show up. When we did the bandstand, I think we had close to 100 people with this, where it's a celebration, and tours, we're thinking that we may have that many or more. And so, we, what we're planning on doing is having two tours of the cemetery by Glenn, and then interspersing the celebration part of it between those two tours, thinking that, and we will have to have people sign up for the tours ahead of time. And so what we're thinking is if we have a tour, say at 10 o'clock, and then a ceremony after that, and then another tour after the ceremony, people will be more likely to stay and go to that ceremony. The problem that we have is that he's not available for a rain day if we have rain that day, and so we, you all had approved us using Town Hall on that day if it's a rainy day to have the ceremony, and then Glenn would do a cemetery and gravestone presentation geared towards the Plain Cemetery. And so, if we happen to do it, have a rain day, then we need to have somebody to be able to do all of the audiovisual stuff that goes along with it as far as podiums and microphones and all of those kind of things. And so, we were wondering if we can get your permission to have Adam here that day to do those things, if he's available. He's available at this point, but if he's available to have him here to do those things for us.
He is available, is that what you said?
At this point.
Okay, all right.
The other part of it is, the other thought we had was that there are likely people who won't be able, who would like to be engaged in the whole celebration, but who probably can't do the cemetery tour, either because of physical disability, that would preclude that, because it's an uneven surface. You're talking an hour and 20-minute tour, probably. And we don't know whether there'll be some people who would like to sign up, but will not be able to sign up, because we have to limit each of those tours to about 70 people. And so the other thought we had was even if it wasn't a rainy day, would it be possible to have the ability to have a video tour of the cemetery that Glenn had done previously to be broadcasted here for those people who weren't physically able to be at the cemetery or were not able to sign up? And so, that was the other option. We were thinking of two options, and wondered how you all felt about that.
So you've already reserved the Town Hall, just in case of rain?
Yeah.
So, I mean, even if it's a good day, you could still have it for that purpose, I would think, for folks who couldn't act physically, ambulate the...
Right.
And get around at the cemetery.
Yeah.
So is this a video to be shown here, or one that you want broadcast?
No, it would be a video shown here.
It's a video for here.
Of a previous tour.
Of a previous tour.
Yeah. It wouldn't be a live broadcast from the cemetery, no.
That would be nice.
That would be great.
Well, that would be nice.
We don't have that.
No.
We do, you know, the two tours, we're fortunate that the New Hampshire Humanities will be granting us the money to pay them for the two tours, and so, you know, that's...
To pay Glenn Knoblock?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So your request of us really is the use of, assuming that Adam is available, to help work the AV that day? And by the way, which day is it?
May 31st.
May 31st? And the time of day?
Well, we're looking at, right now, we're looking at 10 o'clock for the first tour, and then noon for the celebration, and then 1 o'clock for the second tour. And we'll have some flyers out shortly on all of that.
So 10 to, 10 to 3?
Maybe not. It depends. Probably not, no longer than that, obviously.
Okay. I just curious about a window of time. Obviously, this, you know, it's an extra, it's an extra event as far as Adam is concerned, so it's not huge money. I would, I would think that it's a good use of that, as long as Adam's available. Adam, do you happen to know if you're available?
Are you available?
Oh, he has other thoughts, I think. Oh.
So yes, I am available. Respectfully, the showing the video here part was never brought up, and I'm not sure we have the setup for that at the moment. I can look into changing what we have so it would work. I just didn't know that was in the cards, so it might just be a little, little work to get that up and running.
Yeah, I have it on the phone, right?
It's just interfacing the speakers with any kind of playback. It's not impossible. It's just, that would be something I'd have to set up. We don't have that set up now.
Do you feel comfortable that...
Oh, yeah. I just, it will probably take a little time, is what I'm saying. Okay, okay. I just, I didn't want anyone surprised by that later on.
So if the board is in agreement, we can move forward with that?
All right.
Okay. Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Board? Pleasure? What's your wish?
They've already, they already reserved the Town Hall.
The room's already reserved, it's just a question of...
Good.
I'm sorry. Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I'm good with having Adam work his magic and show a video.
Peter?
Second.
So it's a motion?
Yes.
Second. Motion by Laurie, second by Peter. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstaining.
The vote is 4-0-1. Motion carries. So you can feel free to work with Adam.
Thank you.
And Adam, if you can put that on your calendar, that would be great. Thumbs up from Adam. Okay, good.
Thank you. We'd also actually like to have selectmen participation in the ceremony, and so we'll talk about that as far as what is going to be...
Tell, just tell us what you want us to do.
Yep.
And, you know, do we need to go period costume, or what do we need to...
Oh, that would be great.
Wouldn't that be fun, huh?
That would be fun.
Oh, well.
Excellent.
I think we probably, we probably shouldn't go much further than that at this point.
Then you'll have two slots.
Thanks, Ernie.
Yes.
See you Thursday? Ernie? See you Thursday? Okay. All right, public comment number one. Yeah, they're not chomping at the bit, okay. Moving on. Committee liaison reports. Laurie? Nothing?
I don't have anything since last week.
Okay. All right. I don't have anything that I recall, although I'll reserve my right to jump back in if I think of something. Ellie?
Yep, I've got a couple of things.
Your microphone, please.
I received a call from my, from our fire chief this morning, who said that Plasto has asked if he could borrow one of our ambulances for about a week, and we've done that before. It's not unusual request, and there's additional paperwork that goes with it that the chief is familiar with for liability issues. They're in transit with a servicing one of theirs, so with us having two, they want to borrow one for about a week, maybe 10 days. And he just was letting the board know. We've done this in the past, it's not anything unusual, but it's part of the program in cooperation with the ALS replacement and so forth. So that is a good thing for us, and he said it works out, has worked out well in the past. The other thing I have is I received a text from Laura, who's the manager at the Carriertown Grill. I just wanted to personally reach out and thank you for the kind letter of congratulations and recognitions to Carriertown Grill. Our staff truly enjoy serving our community and guests, and the Burger Bowl was added fun. We look forward to engaging in future community-driven events as such. Sign Laurie.
Excellent.
So I wanted to share that with you all.
Were there any questions, by the way, from the board on the ambulance issue?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions, and I don't know, Ellie, if you can answer them. So if we're loaning our ambulance out, do we know how many times both our ambulances are out on calls? Because obviously, if one's out, we're going to have to go to mutual aid, right?
Yeah, and it may be just Plasto.
Right.
Right. Right.
So...
I don't know, I couldn't tell you how many times they go out.
Yeah, yeah, I figured, yeah.
That's, that's something you have to ask the chief.
Right, okay. Thanks.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, thank you, Ellie. Peter?
Okay, I got a, got a few things. First of all, I'm having a lot of interest in the Kingston Days. So I have found out that everybody that was previously appointed to the Kingston Days, terms have expired. There are no existing members to that committee. So we're going to get a group together, and we're going to kind of do a brainstorm, issues that were had, things that people will look at differently, and see if it's feasible to do it this year. Because of the time restraints with vendors, carnivals, and ideas for people to actually show up, we tried to push it off as far as we can in the summer. And we can't, we were talking about possibly the last weekend of August. That's maybe before Labor Day, but you're also juggling around other activities going on in the state. You get, you know, the seafood festivals, the races at the Loudon, any big events that could draw people to other locations. We're trying to avoid that, and thinking that maybe that last weekend of August, we could, knock on wood, skirt around any rain issues. This is definitely not a definite, this is just a conversation, and when I have more details with this, with the little brainstorming session we have, I will show up, I will, I will come back to the board and keep you advised what's happening. So right now, it's definitely very premature on this, but one of the biggest things we had to talk about was work that needs to be done on the plains.
The electrical?
The electrical work that needs to be done on the plains. I did reach out, and I spoke to Glenn briefly, talked to Ellie briefly, and I, my memory serves me that it was not going to be included with the ARPA funds, but it would be out of another fund in the town to get that done. That needs to be done, it's very, I would consider it dangerous, if anything out there on the plains. We were resetting breakers and stuff last year out there in the rain. It's definitely not a good situation. So we were looking at some proposals for the electrical service on the plains. We have a very good idea. Graham, myself, Stacy, who's involved with the Kingston Days, Tom Rogan, and actually Tommy, the electrical inspector, we all met up, met out there. And we kind of came up with a plan of what they needed and what needs to be replaced. So, right now, it's going to be the core of the whole project, is in the center of the plain, which is directly in front of the Fire Department. And there's going to be two new poles added. It's going to give us three poles on one side, three poles on the other. They have to replace all the panels. They're going to take a lot of the overhead wires down, and they're going to put them to underground, so it's a lot, it looks a lot nicer to the eye. I did reach out to Unitil. We talked briefly about some poles being replaced. My misunderstanding, that when they said metered poles, they own, in fact, that's not the truth. Those metered poles are our poles, the Town of Kingston's poles. So in order to reset a pole, round figures, it's about $2,000 to change a pole out. I was able to come up with a private donor that would set those poles for nothing. Tom has poles at the, at the highway shed and at the state shed that we could use. So we have poles, and we have a person willing, free of charge, put the poles in for the utility truck. So that's what we're kind of working on.
And if we put the poles in this way that you're suggesting, the utility company will still work with them and put their wires on it?
Well, no. That's what you have to understand. The utility poles that we're putting in are our poles. We put our own wires on it. We have to pay an electrician to put the pole, the wires on. The utility company will not rehook up that pole. It's not their pole. It's a privately owned pole. So an electrician can actually connect to that pole.
Okay, but doesn't the utility have to provide a wire to that pole that we tap off of?
They will. They will come put it on there for free.
They'll do that?
Oh, yeah, they'll do that, yeah. But all the other stuff is done by electrician.
Yep.
So anyways, we're in the process of that. I have a pretty good list. Tom and I had talked about what has to be done. We know it's going to be done, so we're pretty confident that we could, you know, we'll still talk about this RFP and RFQ thing, but I think the RFQ is going to get us more of a, I mean, I don't want, I don't want to get five people come in here and give us all different prices. That's not the point. We want, we know exactly what we need. We've gone over it a hundred times, and this is what we want to price on. So we can talk about that, it's just, we got to get, we get the power work done because they're going to be trenching over there, they're going to be reseating, mowing, you kind of want that back together again before the end of August, so we're not in a mud bowl out there on the plains that we think so highly of. But there's going to be quite a bit of trenching that needs to be done down there, because again, we're dropping power from in the sky underground. Like 3,000 feet of pipe. There's a lot of pipe, 3,200 feet of pipe. So anyways, a lot of stuff's going on out there with that. So anyways, that is the deal with the plains and the power, so I'd like to try to get some numbers together so we can, I'll again, bring this back to the board to decide on some, some figures, some firm figures.
So you're going to be working on putting together...
Yes.
...a set of specs and...
Correct.
Figures that we can then draft an RFQ for?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yes. So that's it for that, the Kingston Days. I just wanted to kind of keep you up. There's absolutely 100% no decisions. I'm just trying to do some preliminary work, yes, so we can kind of get going forward. Whether Kingston Days happens or not, I definitely think that power thing has to be addressed for anything future on the plains. I mean, that, that stuff all came out of the fairgrounds, and it's a pretty scary situation. It worked good for the use of it.
I mean, the town has been limping along with that old system now for a long time.
Correct. Correct.
And it's gotten to the point where I'm sure that it's not safe in places.
Correct. So, we have some great ideas, so we'll put it all on paper, and you hand it out, and Correct, correct.
And it's gotten to the point where I'm sure that it's not safe in places.
Correct. So we have some great ideas. So we'll put it all on paper, and you hand it out, and everybody can look at it before we actually send it out. But we'd like to get that going sooner than later. I had a chance to speak to Marissa. I'm her now liaison over at the town hall. We're on the same sheet of music. She's doing a great job, continues to keep going forward. We're going to be in contact with each other. The only other thing I have is a fence issue on North Road. Do you want to talk about that, Tom? You want me to just touch on it briefly? All right, Tom approached me that we have a resident on North Road in Kingston that they have a paneled fence up along quite a good lineal distance on North Road. I would, what do you think, Tom, 100 feet? Maybe? Maybe 100 feet long. Panel privacy fence? Well, over the course of the winter, and we had a pretty good-sized snow, a couple of the panels got knocked down or opened up.
From plowing?
From plowing. So Tom went right out there to talk to the homeowner. That whole fence is built in the right of way. Right? So it's not a question, it's in the right of way. So the problem we have, that if we take it upon ourselves to fix this fence, now everybody in town that has things in the right of way that's not supposed to be there and they get damaged, do we have a responsibility to fix that in the right of way? Todd, he basically voiced his opinion that he didn't think it was our responsibility. She's asking for help with labor and on and on and on. But the bottom line is, it's in the right of way, and it shouldn't be there to begin with. It's been there for 20 years? 15 years? At least, but because we have not allowed the snow, and this hasn't happened. But however, that's the situation we've got.
Well, I don't disagree with you, but I think there's even another issue, and that is, can we allow that fence to stay in our right of way?
Correct, and that's...
Now that we know about it. It's been there a long time, huh?
Correct. I bet you it's been close to 20 years.
If not more.
If not more.
That is the issue. I mean, one of the issues. But there are so many older fences, stone walls, timbers, that have been there for, I mean, it's not, this isn't a one-off. So, you know, I would prefer half the fence is good, leave it. It's eight feet off the road, not five feet. And because if I, if we say remove the fence, then, you know, do I go down to Joe Schmo and say, hey, get rid of that one? So that's the problem. You know, it's just, just thought I'd bring it up because mailboxes are easy, easier, you know, if it's, there's an ordinance. But, you know, fences, it's a little, you know, and if it was a matter of standing a post up and, you know, putting a few screws in and off we go, I probably would have done it right then. But it's a little more involved, and it was an old fence. So I just thought I'd...
So, so I think we probably have to do it by vote, just to support, we're supporting his decision. We have something on record.
Yep.
It's unfortunate circumstance, because, I mean, but he's 100% right, it's in the right of way.
Yep.
It's not like they maliciously did it, you know, they plowed with snow. And you had a wing running, and you, things are frozen, and they're rolling over, and it popped the privacy panels out.
I think that we probably should also put something in writing that while we're not asking them to move the fence, they need to realize it is in the right of way, and the town's not responsible for any damage caused by anything to do with snow or plowing. Just to put that out there, that we're not making you move it, but it could happen again.
Well, maybe that could be incorporated into whoever's going to be making a motion on this.
Ellen?
I make a motion that we support Tom's previous decision that since this is in the right of way, the town has no responsibility to repair it, and also to send a letter to the property owner, letting them know our decision, and that while we're not going to make them move the fence out of the right of way, it could still cause future issues by it being in the right of way.
Motion by Ellen.
Second.
Second by Peter. Further discussion? All set, Ellie? Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? One abstention. So the vote, motion carries 4-0-1. And Susan, you'll do that letter out to, and if you want to draft it up, and if you want me to sign it, I can do that. Probably should come from, probably should come from the board.
I abstain because this is a person I've known very well, have worked for me for almost 30 years, so appropriate that I not vote on this.
Sure.
Before we go on, I have a couple of questions, Peter. So for, and Stacy, you might be able to answer this because I wasn't here when the committee was formed, so whoever...
What are we talking about? The fence?
The Kingston Days.
Ah, back to the Kingston Days, okay. So just to clarify, we don't have a committee formed?
No, I understand that, but when the committee's formed, how was that done last time? I don't think it can, people can just, I think it was public.
So what we do, the only thing we're doing this time, just to clarify, we're getting a couple of people together that were on the previous committee to get concerns or some ideas. Then we're going to get a committee together?
No, I understand, but the process of getting a committee together was a public process.
So how we got the committee together last time is we posted meetings, got all the interest, and we had signups.
Right.
And then through those signups, we elected all the positions on the committee, and then we brought the list to the select board and got appointed. Our appointments ended, I think, at the end of 2023.
Right.
So then we tried to do another committee, and 2024, we didn't, I think we got like four people to sign up. It was not enough to do Kingston Days or to start it, so that's where it's been done.
Right, so I guess I just wanted to make sure that the few people that are talking, if it's feasible, they still have to, we still have to go through a kind of a public notice thing and all of that. So just factoring that into a timeline, right?
Yeah, absolutely, yep.
Because if you're talking the end of August, it's not a lot of time.
Yeah, I think the first discussion, truthfully, is are we going forward with this issue yet?
Sure.
And if we are, then we'll do the whole committee thing, bring it to the board, the appointments, the whole nine yards. It's kind of like they did before, using those same guidelines.
Right.
But before we kind of just jump into this thing, we really got to do some brain work here.
So there's been a few people who have been interested in it, and I've reached out to Susan, and I've emailed Susan and Peter that if people are interested in Kingston Days and they want to reach out to the Kingston Days email, that we'll add them to the list to reach out to them when we start to form the committee again. So we have, we're starting a list of people. Peter has all the information of the people who are interested. I know there was some talk on Facebook, but I'm, and the person actually posted email this, and I've gotten one email to date, so, but if people are interested, they can email, and then we'll forward everything to Peter.
Stacy, one thing I don't have, and I apologize, and I'm kind of, how many people were on that committee total?
Seven.
Seven.
There is seven of us, the seven major people that did everything.
Thank you.
And then there were 10 of us all together who did it.
Seven, seven key players.
So there was seven on the like core committee, and then there was, we had a total of 10 volunteers for the, for the, did everything, and then we pulled in.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you. That's what I mean when you say seven and three, okay. Thank you.
And then one thing that I don't think was ever resolved, we had voted, one of our last things was to take $2,000 from the Kingston Days and buy materials, like fencing or coolers or stuff like that. And I had compiled a list. I spoke with everybody that worked with it, logistics and whatnot. So I'll provide that list of things that people thought we could have used, different signage.
Yep, so we did signs and like post, snow fence, things like that. I know that the person who was in charge of logistics, I was compiling that list, and then I think we just, we weren't, we didn't get enough people, so I think we just...
Yeah, I have it, because I spoke to about four people. So just letting you know that there's $2,000 there to be able to purchase stuff, because we were scavenging a lot last weekend.
And then there's also the issue of, Peter, you brought this to my attention, that after the last Kingston Days, there was supposed to be some money moved from that account to the celebration account.
The anniversary account?
Right.
Yeah, so...
And that hasn't happened, is that right?
Correct, it has not.
It has not.
Now, that happens by a vote of the committee?
Correct, so when we reform, when we reform, hopefully, I'm just, when we reform, that that's going to have to become a vote of the committee to do that.
Yes, it's not gone anywhere, it's still sitting there.
Yeah, right.
Yep, absolutely.
So usually, whatever budget the committee sets, we leave in that account, and we take the rest and we put it into the anniversary fund.
Correct.
So if we came to the select board for a $40,000 budget, then we would leave that money in the account, and then that, the rest of it would go to the anniversary fund.
Correct.
Right now, since we haven't chose anything, we've kind of just left it where it is.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Laurie?
No, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine. So all set now for now, Peter? Did, we voted, yes? Yes, no?
Was there a vote?
There wasn't.
No.
There was no vote.
Sorry, it was an update. It was an update. Okay.
So Ellen, Ellen for liaison.
Oh! I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Please. Please. You didn't hear the man behind the curtain?
I, I, I've been trained to ignore that. Sorry. The town clerk wanted me to remind the board that any mailer that's going to go out with the tax bills or anything, it has to be to her by June 1st. It's still early, but she wanted to remind everyone, and that it can only be one page. It can't be folded, and it's not one page per committee, it's one page. So the board would have to decide what they wanted to do about that if it comes to the board to decide that.
Could be double-sided.
It can be double-sided.
But it's one eight and a half by 11 sheet.
But it can be one, can't be folded, and she just wanted to clarify that, so that was on everybody's mind. And then I have to talk to the board about something, and it's about, and not anything bad about an employee, just an employee needing to do something, and I don't know if I do that publicly or not publicly.
Well, we're going to be doing non-public at the end, so maybe we wait for that.
Okay, so that was, I was unclear about how that should happen, and I think it might bring up other discussion that should be non-public, so I'll hold on, I'll hold on that then.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have one go back. Lisa from Public Works reached out, and she's asking for the tax insert, actually, if no one else was going to take it. She needs, they need to do their stormwater notification, and that would be one side. So if another, if somebody else wanted to pull the other side, that would be great. But if not, we also would want to use it for solid waste and recycling and hazardous waste.
So what's this for?
That's a tax mailer, just going out into the, into the, it's just a tax mailer. Not the tax insert, just being direct mailed to the house.
So this is a separate mail piece, all by itself?
Yes, yes.
Do you have a budget for this?
Yes, $6,000.
Are you spending it all on this one mailer?
No, it's less than $1,000.
For one mailer?
Uh-huh.
I think that we probably should put out to departments that if they are thinking of having anything to go out with the tax bills, they probably need to just send an email or a note or something, so we don't lose track of it. It's in writing, and that way, if we have multiple ones, we'll have to figure out what to do. If we only have one, then great.
And they have to be done in to the tax clerk by June 1st?
June 1st, he needs it by June 1st.
Right, not...
Not, not...
But we would certainly need to see them before, or need to see the request before, so we can make a decision.
So I just thought, rather than have anybody be caught off guard, we should let the departments know, this is the requirement, let us know if you want something.
Susan, you can do that?
I can do that via an email, or I can also...
Oh, email is...
At the department head meeting as well.
Well, they should get something by email, and we can also reinforce it at the department head meeting.
Laurie, do you have a budget for all these events? I mean, that's an aggressive schedule you have here for this coming, next eight months.
Right, so for these, for the upcoming collection events, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Lisa is getting prices on the electronic waste and the paper shredding, and those were really the only thing, at the cost of mattresses.
But you also need staff to process this stuff, I mean, like the hazardous waste day or...
Well, the hazardous waste day is held in Plasto, and the other one is held in Hampstead. We're not doing it this year. We're not hosting this year.
Okay.
So those aren't on us. We, that is budgeted in the Public Works budget for hazardous waste.
Right, yeah, that one I remember, because we do that annually, in April and in the fall.
Yep, great. So we have to pay them, according to how many residents show up.
Correct.
Yard waste doesn't cost anything. We'll set the cost for bulky waste in mattresses, and the mattresses is just the cost of the mattress, and bulky waste is the cost of the dumpster. Electronic waste, it pays for itself. Paper shredding pays for itself. So I'm not sure what your exact question is there.
My exact question is, how much is it costing us to hold these events? Because you have both...
It doesn't cost us anything.
It does cost us. You're going to have to have this stuff taken out. You're going to have dumpsters, you're going to have, you're going to have some fees charged to the residents that bring stuff.
We don't know what the fees are yet.
Okay, so you're saying that those fees are going to be totally absorbed by the people that bring it? Like if I brought an old mattress, you're going to say it's going to cost $50, and I want...
We charge what it costs us to get rid of it.
Okay, all right, that's the question.
So it's a net zero on those?
On that.
So you still have labor, though? You're still going to have some...
For one Public Works person, yes.
Okay, all right, so the rest will be volunteers if it's successful, okay.
Yes.
And do these happen on our regular collection center opening time?
Yes.
Okay, so it would not be in addition to when we're normally open on the collection center? This isn't, these are interjunction with?
It's already overtime on those dates anyways.
Correct.
I hate to jump around, but I didn't, I didn't know the reason we were putting this RFQ together on the planes, because it came up substantially higher than when we originally looked at it. So we're going to get into that, that's why we'd have to do an RFQ on that. That's the reason for it, I didn't mention that.
Oh, the cost of the electrical work out here on the planes? That's why we have to do this? Right, if it had come in under a certain threshold, we could have, we could have just selected a vendor. But because we're above the threshold, it needs to go out for bid.
Correct.
Yep.
I didn't mention that, sorry.
Yep, no, no problem. Okay. Oh, we could, like, we started it, so...
I'm going to get flack on that later. This is only coming up because I asked initially, when Tom was hired officially, what his title was, and it had to do, it was not DPW. So I'm trying to figure out, is it the Highway or is it the DPW? Because we seem to have multiple names for the same department, and I'm just trying to figure out, because if it's Highway, this has the wrong name on it. If it is the DPW, that's fine, but it does say that you're going to send things to the Highway Administrator. So I just want to know, one way or the other, because I've heard two different things from Selectment. So can we just pick one, and then we'll know?
Laurie?
Well, that Highway Admin is an old email address, so they didn't change that, so that's...
No, but when Tom was hired, he was not hired as the DPW director, so what's going on?
So the Highway Admin email address is when it was called the Highway Department, so however long ago, and then it switched to the Department of Public Works, which I think is separate than Tom's title. So it's still Department of Public Works. And so the information on this is correct, because that's the correct email address, and that it's still called the Department of Public Works. Because we didn't change that, we changed the director's title.
Okay. Does everybody agree with this?
No.
Okay.
I think that DPW is easier to say, which is why we, I think we like it. It's easier. By the same token, it's Highway Buildings and Grounds, or we could do Buildings and Grounds, because it would still be, grounds would still be roads. Building grounds and roads, I don't know, it's, we, yeah, we've used all three.
Yeah.
Well, that's because like, okay, whatever we're going to use, we should make sure our documentation that goes out to people is what everybody else is using. I don't care what it is, but I know I was told that this was something designated by a previous person and that it had gone back to the old one, and I don't know...
The old one was really Road Agent, but we don't need...
No, I mean the Highway Buildings and Grounds is what I had been told prior to sitting here. So I just was reading this going, I don't care what it is, but we should all know. We can talk about this another time, people can think about it, we can talk about it next week, but I just wanted the?
We should do that.
The right stuff going out. So why don't we think about it?
Okay.
We talk about it next week?
Yeah.
And, um, we'll put it on the agenda to figure out the name of whatever. Okay.
Okay.
Susan, you got that?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, under old business, uh, we have something already listed. I have one more thing to add to it, and it's just a quick reminder to folks that if you have any input on what you think board priorities for the coming year should be, please just jot them down and send them to Susan in an email. I believe, Lori, you've already done that. If anyone else wants to provide stuff for that list, please get it to Susan. And what I'd like to do is put it on our agenda for April 7th, our first meeting in April. Add it as an agenda item, so we can review whatever, whatever list we've gotten so far. We have the acknowledgement for the bridge grant to sign, and this is for, this document is from FEMA, and it is for the federal funding. This is, this is related to the warrant article that, that passed in March. Federal award is $1,186,912.80, which is 90% of the total approved project cost of $1,318,792. The non-federal part, which is our share, which I believe we've already taken care of, is 10%, which equates to $131,879.20. And so this is the Town of Kingston Bridge Block Grant, and... I believe that it is all ready for us to sign, is that right, Paula? Okay. So if I could have a motion to that effect, I will go ahead and do that. So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Motion by Peter, second by Ellie. Any questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, abstentions? Okay, that's unanimous, motion carries. Um, I'm assuming that, Paula, it's the signature block that says sub-recipient?
Yes.
It would be that one?
Town of Kingston is the sub-recipient.
Well, it's the only place there, but I just want to make sure.
The recipient is the state of New Hampshire, and?
Say, say that again, Tom?
The HSMEM is the recipient.
Oh, okay.
From FEMA.
Town is the sub-recipient.
Sub-recipient.
Got it.
But this is just a, it's another step. This, we're not receiving again. This is just another step in the process. It actually is big enough, it has to go through congressional approval, which will take about?
Six years?
A month. And then it has to go through the governor's council once it reaches the state, which is another?
Six years.
Month.
Oh, it's another month or so.
So, yeah, this is just another step in the?
Okay.
In the process. So I just wanted to begin, like, we're not, we didn't win yet. We're closer.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Okay, so I have endorsed that on behalf of, on behalf of the town. Okay. Uh, new business. Well, we've sort of talked about the first item. Uh, is there anything more to say on the mailer for solid waste recycling? Not at the moment?
Well, we would like to get it in the, as soon as it's approved, we want to get it in the mail. Has to go to the printer, so it'd hit everybody's mailbox. First of next week, probably, however long that takes.
So we want to carry that, we want to carry that item over to our next meeting, right?
Which item?
The, the, the?
The mailer.
The mailer.
To clear up the DPW thing?
Just any cleaning up we need to do. Should we keep it on, so we don't lose track of it?
So, we're gonna wait for the DPW conversation to, for this? Okay.
I just want to make sure we don't lose track of it.
Well, I?
It'll be closer to Earth Day, that one.
That, that's fine. I mean, we just want to get it out in the mail, so, yeah.
Yes.
I'm just, I'm just trying to understand what we're holding it for, to clear up, because there's, there's conversation about it saying Department of Public Works? Is that the only question?
The only question I have is that we settle on what name it is we're actually using and make sure we're all using the same name.
So I feel like that's a bigger question than just this mailer, and that it impacts a lot of other things, so?
I still think we can address that next week and let that be the end of it. I don't think?
Yeah.
I think, unless I'm missing something.
Yeah, okay.
So Susan, if you'll add that, make sure we have it on the agenda for next week? Okay. Um, the next item is the operating plan for the collection center. Is this something that you were gonna address, Lori, or?
Um, no, um, Tom might be able to speak to it. Lisa's been, they've been working on it, and it's required by DES to have this.
Okay. Hi.
Hi, again. Lisa's done the human's work on this, but it's, um, it's just, should've been in place, it isn't in place, and it needs to be. So it's just soup to nuts, how we're operating. And, uh, it, the only thing holding it, as far as I understood it, was holding the process from going forward, if I'm not mistaken, was the least, the, the dam bureau has to sign off on that, on that, uh, permit.
And have they seen this? Oh, you say?
The dam bureau owns the land, so the owner actually has to sign off, and I, I think because it's still?
Sign off on this?
Yes, because it's in limbo, that's, that's what's holding it up. I, I believe that's the case. But, uh, it needs to be, that, that document actually has to be on site when you're running the facility, so we need to get that done.
So what, what is it there for us to do here at this point?
Um, you, I think, deeds a signature?
Right.
From you and Ellie, but I, there were things I want to get with Lisa about?
Yeah.
It was all editorial, it wasn't content?
Okay.
But you guys just have to sign it?
Yeah, that, that, the town, whoever, you know, the, the town, obviously, has to sign, and the property owner has to sign, which typically, most, most collection centers, I'm sure, are town-owned. This one happens to be dam bureau, that is the only thing.
Right, because we're leasing that land from the state.
Do we have a, do we have any word on the lease?
And as far as I know, that's the only thing holding the process.
So should we not be signing this until the state signs it?
Well, they have signed previously.
Yes, so we?
Yes.
So, we have a operating permit, and we should've had an operating plan to go with that current operating permit. And the, the dam bureau did sign off on the original permit. We do have?
So am I mistaken, in that, that if they sign this operating plan?
I, I believe that we're fine with this, because what we're waiting on? We're trying to amend the permit, and we can't amend the permit until the dam bureau signs off on it, and we can't get that until we get the signed lease.
Right.
So that's that chain of event?
Yeah.
This one is for the current?
Operating plan.
Operating permit that we have approved.
Okay.
That's what this is for, because it just talks about cardboard and glass.
I see, yeah, I was mistaken.
Okay, so if, if, if this reflects our current operating plan, and we should be signing it, then we're gonna need a copy of one that does not say draft on it.
And then I have some changes for Lisa to make, anyway, because she, she switches between Kingston Collection Center and Kingston Recycling Center, and so there's kind of some wording that probably needs to be changed.
It goes back to what Ellen was saying, yeah.
And all the, all the DPW stuff.
Yeah, so, yeah, I took notes, I gotta get with Lisa on that part, anyway.
And you have, I, I had a couple of the same kind of things, where it's like, uh, this word should be likely, not likely, but it sounds like you've already?
Yeah, so whatever you have, though, so we probably caught different things. So we should probably provide that feedback, and then?
Yeah.
Has, has Paula seen this?
Um, there's, no, there's no money associated with this? It's not a contract, it's an operating plan?
Yeah, it's just a required document for running the center. How are you operating, just like there's a closure plan, has to be in place, same kind of thing. How are you closing it? This one's simple, just remove the dumpsters, but?
Yeah.
That's the DES, you know? You have to have.
I did have one question that I just, I'm, oh, shoot, I'm sorry, I thought I was on. And I didn't write down what page it was, but, and, and I just don't know what the, what the current policy is about things like this, but it's that staff certifications, I think are going to be wherever we're calling that building down near the highway department, and, um, but shouldn't they also be in the personnel files? If someone has a staff certification, shouldn't, shouldn't the HR, Board of Selectmen people be able to also have that copy? I don't know, I, I know it used to have to be that way, but I don't know whether things have changed. I have no problem with it being there, but I just don't know. A lot of times, any certification of a staff person was also in their?
Personnel file.
Personnel file.
Yeah.
So I just didn't know if, if, that's the only thing I saw that I had, I mean, I had a question about some of the language, but not about? Well, there was something here about?
The, the solid waste operator training, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, something about the, that the, the staff certifications will be at the?
There's a, we have a binder, right, and they all have to be in that binder, so if somebody comes from DES, they could?
I have no problem with that, I just didn't know if they should also be in a personnel file.
Well, it's not a bad idea.
I'll leave that to the board.
Yeah, yeah, I don't see why they wouldn't be.
I would think that if, if I was a town employee and I had a certification, I'd want that in my file.
It should be in their employee files.
Yeah.
So I absolutely understand needing it at one place, but I thought it should be in their personnel files as well.
Yep. All right, so there's more work to be done on this?
Yeah.
We'll pick this up again next week? If, well, we'll see where we are next week.
So you want it back on the agenda?
Back on the agenda, please, yes. I have one more thing to add under, um, new business, and that is, I'd like to make sure that we do some follow-up on Article 21 that passed at the, at the election, and that was the article to, by, to make the Vets Club, uh, non-tax, non-taxed, for property taxes. So, um, I would like permission from the board to seek guidance from council on this, because I don't know if this is something we have the authority to do. I mean, the voters voted it, but I don't know if?
I'd recommend you talk to the tax clerk, because you can't do it. You cannot, you can't, you have no authority to do that.
According to the assessor, you can't.
Yeah, you cannot do that.
And, and if I can, at, at the deliberative session, the town attorney came up, and I was moderator at the town this time, to say, you know, basically, this is, you can make it be advisory if you want, but you can't do it.
Okay, so then there really isn't anything for us to do on this?
No, no, like, the Vets Club has, can do something, they can?
Oh, they?
They can proceed?
They can make a change.
To get a 501(c)(3) status, so they become tax exempt, and at that point, we can grant them tax exempt status, but they gotta do the paperwork.
Okay.
Can, can I just recommend how we're, are we gonna tell them that? Because when, there's a lot of chatter about, oh, we're tax exempt now, and they're not, so they're not gonna be happy, 'cause it passed, and they're still not tax exempt. You know what I mean? So?
I guess, I guess we dealt with, we, I guess we dealt with this before, we did. And we told them they need to fill the paperwork out. There's paperwork you can fill out with the state, same with the Gideon Lodge. They can do that, too. They, they have the right, there was a big court case with the Gideon Lodge, because it's kind of like a religious, that they have the right avenue to fill that paperwork out, and they've never done it. And the VFW, if I'm not mistaken, the last conversation we had with them, they applied to the state, and I think there's a ratio of members and affiliates or support group or whatever they call themselves down there, and they decided not to go with the paperwork, because they consider themselves a social club.
Right.
So they couldn't get that 501(c). But they have to have that to be the tax, the tax purpose. So if they fill out that paperwork and bring it to us, that's what we need.
Right, but what I'm saying is, do we do a letter to them explaining, so that they don't? I mean, 'cause there's a lot of talk, and they're gonna be, they being, you know, members and whatnot, are gonna be upset when they're like, well, we are tax exempt, and?
That might be when you call the attorney.
I was gonna say, I think there's a question about how much proactiveness we should be doing on this.
I'm not sure that we should be doing any other than to advise them of, this is advisory only, which is what was said at the deliberative session as well, as well as at a meeting here.
But I, I think Lori's right, that there's enough discussion and confusion that you might want to?
Yeah, I agree.
That's why you might want to talk to attorney to find out the best way to word this kind of thing?
And just send them a letter and say, that was an advisory, we understand, and this is what you need to do. And, or, or, seek, seek IRS help, or whatever, but, so they can get their ducks in a row, so?
Because I agree with you, there's confusion based on the large thank you sign that's up.
Ah, the large thank you sign with the Vets Club.
Correct.
Exactly.
If they put in that paperwork for the exemption, the assessor is going to explain this to them, and then it will come to you. But then he'll be ready, if you speak to the attorney.
Okay.
God love them, they, they do a lot of wonderful things, but they've got to get that paperwork done.
All right, so, may I have a motion authorizing me to contact council for guidance on how we communicate this?
Yes, so moved.
Ellie, second by Ellen, discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, that's unanimous. So, we should put that as a follow-up on, for next week, and I'll?
Next week.
Yep, I'll get an answer, um, well, I'll, I'll see, I'll try to get an answer by, by next week. Okay. Board business. I had, I added this to the agenda, and I asked Paula to provide copies, and I believe they're in our packets, of the budget? And, and the current spreadsheet for the ARPA? And, I mean, the board can decide differently if it wants, but I think that, given the board's responsibilities in watching over the finances of the town, we ought to be reviewing the budget on a regular basis. Now, I don't think every meeting is the right thing, and I think quarterly is maybe not enough, at least for a while, I think I'd like to do it at least once a month. And, um, if we, if we can't, if Paula, if you think that the, having, doing it at our first meeting And if we, if we can't, if Paula, if you think that the, doing it at our first meeting in the month is not, is not gonna be easy enough to get data from you for that, we could do it the second meeting?
Right, I think so.
Okay. So while you're thinking about that, um, in your packets, in your board packets, you have, um, you have those two, two things. The, um, the budget, which is the, should be the budget that was passed at, at town meeting. And so it's our budget for January through December of this year.
It's what passed plus the few warrant articles that got added into the budget. So.
So it was the operating budget plus whatever warrant article money.
That had to do with the budget, not for trust funds or anything like that. Yep.
I realize that the board is just seeing this now, and so, I mean, getting into a lot of detail is probably not the right thing, but I do want us to get into the habit of looking at the budget on a monthly basis, and.
I would say the second or third week is best, because the first week, I don't have, I mean, it could be the first week, but you're gonna, it's not gonna be for the month before.
As long as we pick a consistent week. I, I don't think it matters, really. I just.
Paula's saying the third?
If the third, if the third week is fine, then I'm, I'm fine with that.
I'm gonna ask you a real crazy question, too. Is it, is it difficult for you on the program?
I can print it bigger.
No, that's not, that's not, well, that, that would be good as well. Okay, no, my, my question is, if, if you see, as the person making the report, if you see a line item that maybe we had to pay a little bit more attention to?
Yep.
Can you make it red? Because to sit here every third Monday of the month and read this per-line item, when everything's kind of going status quo, if you see something that's an issue, maybe you could highlight it with the red, so that would draw our attention, we can have something to talk about? Because if you're right on task with everything, it's great to see this report. But I mean, for us to go through all this every third Monday, I, I just think it'd be, you know, if you saw a little bit of an issue, you could maybe make a highlight, so we could kind of pay attention to a little certain things.
Yep.
We'll be talking about one of them in non-public.
And then that would, that would allow us, the department head meeting, if we have questions, to be able to then ask them at the following meeting.
Which would be the following week.
Great, yeah.
Okay, so that's good. That'll help us. We're, again, I know everyone's just seeing this now. Paula, is there anything on here that you want to flag for us while you're, while you're sitting there?
There's really nothing.
I know it's early in the year, and it's just getting going, but.
The only thing that was mentioned was the fire chief overtime line. He spent 33%, but I mean, that's a quarter of the year, so it makes sense. But it's because of his employee that is getting his paramedic certificate. He has to, I'm gonna probably say this wrong, and he'll yell at me, but he has to do these other, um, I, I'm gonna say like internships almost. He has to go to like Plastow and stuff like that. So he tries to do that during his days off, but sometimes he can't, and he has to have a certain amount of hours there, so he has to fill in with overtime. So his overtime's a little higher, but once he passes his paramedic, that'll be over.
Okay.
But that's the only thing.
Laurie?
Well, I'm just looking through, just because of everything that we're signing, the general assistance line's really high. It's already, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's already, yeah.
Ellie?
No, I don't have any questions at this time.
Nothing else you want to flag for us at this time? But stay there, because we also have the ARPA sheet, and if there are any, any things there that we should be talking about. So this is, this looks like, is this as of December 31?
Nope, 3/20. It should.
The date is 3/20, right over here.
Got it. Revised 3/20.
The only change is that I finally got in touch, well, I've been getting in touch with them, but they wouldn't give me the information. With the Unitil, I finally got, um, the address to send it, so that check is going out this week when she comes to sign checks. The $20,000, but that happened just now, so I didn't update this with that.
Okay.
Congratulations. We talked about this, and she was struggling to get that, and must've gotten it today.
Like, you wanna get paid.
Yeah, well, good.
So, um, I-works will get paid whenever the contract, it's a yearly payment, and then the rest are for the front steps and the architect. So, those are ongoing payments as they do different steps.
And I, while, while you're on the subject of the steps, I noticed that all the masonry equipment is out there, and there were a couple of granite blocks. Looks like they're starting to place them and get it all oriented, and, which is good. And presumably, once that's done, there'll be a clearly significant progress payment, I would assume, that happens after that, based on the contract.
Yeah, I mean, we've paid $31,000 so far, so.
Yep.
And I just want to make everyone aware that if, I know it says we have, I know this number is minus the $20,000 I just paid today, but $67,000 even, we have already obligated all of the funds. There's no more funds to be obligated. So let's, I'm gonna give an example. Let's say the stairs come under budget. That's not extra money. I have to amend, I do reporting once a year, because of how much we got. We only have to report once a year in April, and when I do that, I have to put in every single project. So literally list all this and how much it was, and then once it's paid or not paid or whatnot, I have to, I can amend that project, but if things are under-budgeted for, we have to give that money back.
Right, because our deadline for obligating the funds was last, the end of the, last year. And so now, we're in the process of just spending the money, and anything that doesn't get spent goes back.
Yes.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yep, yep. Any questions from the board?
Nope.
Okay, thanks, Paula. So Susan, if you could note to self that on the third, our third meeting of the month, we'll put, have this as a standing item, and Paula, if you can kind of work toward that, that would be great. And the suggestion of flagging things in red, that would be helpful. Anything that might, you want, might want to bring to our attention. Okay. The next bullet item under board business, and, and this is a question I don't know the answer to, but I think the board needs to discuss it. There was a, I'm gonna call it a small pot of money, but a pot of money in the budget, set aside for employee raises that were not covered elsewhere and separate from the COLA. And I, what is our process for doing that, and how are we gonna handle it? Now, we might not have an answer today, but I, I think we need a plan for how we're gonna go forward with it.
It was agreed that $83,000, I do need to make this bigger, because I can't.
It's $83,500.
$83,500 was put into salary adjustment, and that was calculated based on all the employees in the whole town. And for any pay increases that the board decides to give, for performance-based. There's a couple ways we can do it. In the past, when we had pay-for-performance, you had that $83,000, and then the board said, okay, uh, police gets this much, fire gets this much, and you broke it out, and then I kind of worked with you and the departments to see who would get what. But where, we don't have a wage matrix really yet, and I don't know how long that will take. I don't know what you guys really wanna do, if you wanna hold off on that and wait until we get that information and have it for the end of the year, or do it now.
I'm gonna be talking about this as another item, but I'm fully expecting that, assuming we can get an RFP out soon. And I'm working on putting a draft together for the board to review for a wage slash compensation study that will contract out, that we, the goal would be to have that study done by sometime this summer. So sort of a three-month window of time to get it done, which, from talking with people, that's a reasonable amount of time to get it done. So, do we, is it reasonable to wait until we have that before we make any other decisions?
If the decision was made, do we, would these, would these employees be retro? Because it's the year's budget, that's half the year gonna be gone, possibly in June or July. So that would be a retro, because I think maybe the department heads would have some maybe input on this, because I think some of the employees are probably at the cap of their hourly rate. And I, I believe that they have a, they have a CO or a list, a cost of living, I get that. But as far as a monetary raise, I think they could probably look at some of the employees and know that they pretty much were capped off. Some of the other people might have to get caught up a little bit.
Right, and, but that's part of what the wage study is gonna help us understand, is, is where, you know, where folks fall within the, within the brackets.
I'd be in favor of that, as long as they're gonna, the people that are gonna have the raises will be retroactive.
We normally have done retroactive.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's kind of.
For April 1st.
Yes.
The only.
As of April 1st, right.
The only, um, we have to subtract, and I don't have the number right in front of me, because I wasn't prepared, but the two contracted department heads, their pay-for-performance, that's in their contract, we just subtract that off of that.
Comes out of this.
But, yes.
But you also, I mean, this includes the Social Security, FICA, all that.
It includes benefits, too.
It's not a gross sum of monies that's available. It's less than the $83,000.
I just can't break that part out yet, because I don't know what we're paying.
It's not, all that's included in that money.
Yeah.
So there isn't really $83,500 for raises.
No, that is for everything, and benefits and everything.
So for the contracted ones, you said that, that $83,000, that is part of that? Or I thought those were budgeted line items?
Nope, those were in that number.
Those were in the $83,500?
$83,500, we had a certain number there for those two people, and then at the deliberative, not the deliberative budget meetings.
Right, we took those out?
Nope, it's all included in there. It's included in there. We took them out of their line item. It was never in their line item. Okay, all right.
Stacy's leaving.
Yeah, she's coming up, yep. Excuse me. Okay, Stacy.
$3,500 is in the paper performance line. That is for the two contracted employees. The $80,000.
$3,000 total?
$3,500 for those two.
Which is part of that $83,500.
Right, which is the total, but the $80,000 was in the, another category that was for bringing up all the employees, including raises, social, everything like that. They were in the budget I have. They're two separate lines.
In the budget, they're two separate lines, but the total is $83,500.
Yep.
So, getting back to the question then, assuming that we're, do retroactive like we have done, to, back to April 1?
It'll be April 1st.
Right. Is the board okay, assuming that we're looking at having a, a wage study done by sometime this summer? Because that's, because that's the goal, is to make sure we have that in time for, you know, budget season and moving forward.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think we should, we have the money to do the study. I think we should do the study and finalize it, that, so to speak.
But to, and to use that data to help us make decisions on.
That's correct, because there may be some that should get raises and others that should be gone.
Yes.
So, that, well, that was one of my questions. So, how is this based? Is it, are we waiting to get performance appraisals on them, and that's how the department heads are gonna base their raise recommendation?
In the past, we've had, we relied on the department heads to make the recommendations. We give them the, the format, or the parameters, if you will, but they make the recommendations, because they do the evaluations.
Yes, but this is a little, so that, when this was created, this $80,000 pool, we had no wage matrix, so it was gonna be performance-based, but if we are going to do it based on a wage matrix and moving somebody up to be where they should be paid on the matrix, then it's not going to be performance-based.
Well, I don't, was, is the intent to fix people's salaries with this, or is it for a merit-based increase?
I think it's both.
I think it was both.
A little bit of both.
A little bit of both, because I think we talked about, some of the people are really maxed out.
Right.
We talked about that, and other people really kind of get, get bumped a little bit to get kind of caught up.
Right.
So I don't think there's gonna be any, besides the CO, I don't think there's gonna be any, like, across the board, everybody gets the same. Because some people definitely gonna move, and other people don't.
Yeah.
So I think that's what we talked about.
I think this just needs to be tabled until it's.
Correct, yep, I agree.
If I can, though, I think that we should still have the department heads do a review.
They, they are.
They should, they should proceed with that.
They are, and they're in the process of it.
But I know some are, but let them know.
Yeah, I've talked to all of them.
Okay, okay, so that the reviews are done, and then when we get the wage matrix, we'll get those reviews, and then may have to have discussions with the department heads about, based on this. I don't think we can allocate money until we have all of it, figure it out, and then, then go from there, because I don't want anyone to think they can get ex, and I know that that's not, but I just want the department heads to have an idea of what may be occurring once we get the wage matrix. Because I think before, they've had a, haven't they had sort of a pot of their own that they can work with and distribute?
It's changed every year. It's not consistent.
Okay, so that's all, I just.
Your, your, your mic isn't on, but, yeah, maybe it got caught on this. Maybe we can shoot. Oh, good, okay, there. Okay. Okay, that's enough of that. Our folks all settled on that then for now?
Now, will we, will, will someone tell the department heads, so they can tell their employees that we're not ignoring them, we're just waiting, and that it will be retroactive?
I will, I'll tell them.
We can tell them next week as well.
Oh, that's true. I should get about that.
We can do it at the department head meeting. And the last item under board business that I've added is the wage study, which we already talked about. I have, I reached out, and I've got some samples that other towns had put together, and so what I'm doing is trying to meld them and come up with one that I think would work for us. And my plan is to have that for you all to review next week at our meeting. So that's my plan. So Susan, if we can add that to the agenda, please? You're gonna need, you're gonna need multiple pages, probably, but I don't want to lose track of this stuff, so it's best to put it on there if we can. All right. Public comment number two.
Good evening. I'm Dave Shaw. I'm representing the Shaw Family Trust. I have a parcel of land on Door Road in Kingston, and I had timber harvest there, and I received a tax bill from the town, which I feel is to the high end of the assessment as far as the state borderline. And I wrote a letter to the board. I don't know if you had the chance to review it or not, for, as far as a hardship, as far as the removal of the timber from the property. And I would like to rate adjustment on it.
Okay, well, this, this was, this is in our packets, and it was gonna be discussed under our next item, so we can do that now. This has gone through our assessor, and there has, we have paperwork here to sign for an abated amount. In the amount of $729.79.
Very good.
So that's where it stands.
That's what's taking off. That's what's taken off.
That's what's coming off?
Yeah.
That's the amount that it's being reduced by?
Correct.
Okay, and is that what you were more or less expecting it to be?
Yes, I feel that's fair enough. Now, it's close to 10% of what I, uh, amount of timber I received out of it.
Okay, so we have all the paperwork here. It needs the board's signature. I'd like a motion to, for the board to authorize this, and it's for, the property owners are David and Deanne Shaw, Shaw Family Living Trust. They live in Amesbury, but the property is located at 41 Door Road in Kingston, and this is for tax year 2024, 2025. It's lot R, map five, lot five, and it is for an abated, an amount of, the abatement of $729.79.
So moved.
Motion by Ellie?
Second.
Second by Laurie. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? One. Okay, so motion carries. Four in favor, none opposed, one abstention. And so we will sign this. It'll go back to the assessor, and they'll take.
Tax collector.
I'm sorry.
Tax collector. Tammy will do the refund.
So I'll receive another bill, reduction bill?
You haven't paid it yet, right? If you haven't paid it yet, she.
No.
I'm not, that's a tax collector question.
You may want to call the town office downstairs.
You're gonna want to talk to the tax collector downstairs to figure out the logistics of how they do that.
All right, all right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Ellie, Ellie, do you want to sign that?
I don't think so, I don't. Oh, yes, it is, yes, it is.
Yeah, it was, it went through the whole process.
Yeah, and we signed it. Yep, we did.
Okay. Let's see, we have, so we're into, so was there any more public comment, number two? No, okay. So we're on to correspondence, which is stuff in our orange folder here. We have purchase orders for, oh, actually, those are in the, those are in the purple folder. Okay. So there are purchase orders for HVAC maintenance, duct cleaning, and a mower. There were three bids received for the mower from DPW. Says any questions should be addressed to Paula and Tom.
Each one had three bids.
Right, and I believe that, Ellen, have you seen that folder?
Some are quotes, not necessarily bids.
Right, but they're purchase orders to, to sign off on. We're all set on this?
Yeah, we're set.
Okay. All right. We also have the MS 232 form, which is for the Department of Revenue Administration. And I believe that this is how we verify to them what was voted at town meeting. Is that right, Paula? Stacy?
Yes, is this something, yeah, that's the final vote?
It says reported appropriations actually voted.
I have to go in, which I did, obviously, because that printed, and go through each warrant article and say that it passed or not passed, the amount of votes and all that stuff. And then for, and when it finalizes, it takes all the past and creates the new budget.
Okay. So this is okay, this is all set to sign off on?
Yes.
Okay. If you'd like to sign that one, please. So we'll pass this around and get that signed off. We have also an appointment sheet for our deputy, or a deputy, town treasurer. This is for a term to expire March 10th, 2026. And it's for Donna Clark. Is there anything we need to know about this?
You need a motion?
It would be good.
So moved.
Excuse me. Motion by Ellie to, to sign this appointment.
Second.
Second by Lori? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extentions? It's unanimous. So I will sign off and pass it around. We have a veteran's credit application. This says that it's okay to sign. We don't typically announce the names on these here, no. Susan? Thank you. Complaint received and answer sent.
I don't know if you want to do that in public, it's just, it's been addressed.
Okay, all right, we can take, we can do that under.
I just wanted you to see it.
Yep. And as well as the letter from.
Yeah, that's.
Okay. There's one other thing in the orange folder, and that is, okay. One more. There's a letter here from Southeast Land Trust, addressed to the select board and assessor. Looks like copies were also sent to DRA and to Conservation Commission. It's dated March 17, 2025. And it's from Brian Hart, the Executive Director of Southeast Land Trust, to whom it may concern the AHL Memorial Forest?
All.
All, okay, that's the name, okay, okay. Owned by Southeast Land Trust, Kingston Tax Map R31 Lot 1 is currently being harvested under a 2024-2025 fiscal year intent to cut. The operation is not presently completed. Under the Department of Revenue Administration ruling, current logging operations may be extended beyond the current fiscal year by letter signed by the landowner. Therefore, we request an extension for the current operation beyond March 31, 2025. I or my forester, Charles Moreno, will submit the report of wood cut for the operation in the near future.
Just to give a heads up for them, I've been, I've been working with salt on that property. And they're expecting me done in April. And they, they have a reclamation project that they do when they're done. And I'll be doing a walkthrough with them during that.
Okay.
Yeah, well, they, they just say it should be done by the end of April.
So they haven't requested a specific deadline, but I'd rather give them a little longer than.
Absolutely.
I mean, June 30? That gives, gives them through the spring and, I mean, just in case they run any issues. It's up to the board.
They could always ask for another extension, but I think June 30th is fine.
Okay.
So I'd accept a motion to extend the current, it's the intent to cut, right?
Correct.
For the all Memorial Forest, being logged by Southeast Land Trust, currently expiring on March 31, 2025, to extend that to June 30, 2025. Lori motion? Second by Peter? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extentions? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. So, put that in there for you, Susan. It's for you, okay. Approval of meeting minutes for March 17.
So moved, public and non-public.
Okay. Motion by Ellie, second by Peter. Ellen, discussion?
There's no child at that.
Oh, it'll, it'll be, yeah, that's the chart that you, of your, yeah, I need to, when I post them, I'll make sure that it's on there.
Is that the appointments?
Yes.
The liaisons and such?
Yeah, rather than put them in the body, I attached them, but I say attached and then I didn't put it in your copy.
Okay.
But you already have one.
So we, we have them, and I believe you sent them also to all the department heads and board heads and.
Yep.
Okay.
Sorry, this is in no way meant to dismiss that work. First full paragraph. And on page six. That's just a little thing, don't worry about that. That's just a little thing.
I have a chart.
But on page six, it was Miss Alessio who talked to Claudine Diaz. It's under E. Faulkner.
Okay. Oh, no, wait a minute, which, you're on page six.
It's right above public comment number two. And she said she has recommended Deb Powles as a replacement. Ann talked with Claudine Diaz and it was Miss Alessio who spoke with Claudine.
Okay.
What was the first one you said she didn't catch?
The first one that, oh. It was on page four. And it says that this is in not way meant and it should be no way meant. That's just a little thing. It's on page four, first paragraph, right above all in favor. Last line is that, last one.
In no way, gotcha.
Not in not way.
Okay, we got it.
Anything further? All right, then the, the vote is going to be for the minutes as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries unanimously. And we have a few non-public items to do. And so I would, is there any more business under public, under the public meeting? Before we do not, because the intent would be for us to only come back to public for the purpose of closing out the meeting, but not to do any further with this. All right, so I would like a motion to go into non-public session for RSA 91-A colon 3 Roman 2C.
So moved.
Motion by Ellie.
Second.
Second by Ellen. Roll call, Ellen?
Aye.
Peter?
Yes.
Ellie? Glenn, yes? Lori? Okay. All right.